Yes, you have. You probably got a hundred. San Marcos story. So, did you actually went to San Marcos pretty? Or did you? Oh, my gosh. Yes. Yes. I think it was. You know, I didn't realize that. Oh, yes. Well, the Red Barn is now in our neighborhood because we have the. Connor's Hall that works. Yeah, it's well, yeah, right. Yes. Okay. I love. Yeah. Okay. Okay. I, we lived there for twenty-six years and I, you know. I know. And expensive. Yes. But luckily there's some stuff. So we still. And I love being out. So, okay, so, yes, so they, I can't remember that they were already. The wedding reception in the barn, uh, way back when, but I guess so. It's awesome. Well, anyway, um, I was. We are just, we're here tonight to talk about the project, we're training people and then, you know, how we're seeing what we'd like to hear. So our.
Put them up on the list.
Stories. So, um, I do. Great, great. So are you, you're, you have full three time now or you still have? Yes, yes. Okay. Yeah. Oh, I know. We're the sandwich generation now, right?
Can you do it?
Yeah. Oh. Are you okay with that?
No, I, I can.
If he shows up, if he shows up, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Well, I do it. I do, I do.
Hi, Paula. Arthur's pie. Hi. Did you get a new pancake?
I don't know. I personally would. Exchange. I think they should do this. In spite of, because an invocation happens. And that is not. So that's my case. Dan, if you are giving your invitation, they send you. Exactly what she said to the non-San Marcos. So if, you know, if they would, of course, that. Well, if somebody says. Great. Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order for September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could please remain standing. I don't see Danielle Jones here this evening, so Tanis Brown has agreed to give our invocation this evening. Thank you so much, Tanis.
Ooh, speaking off the cuff, I don't know if I can do that.
Oh, yes, you can.
Let us acknowledge that we are here tonight to engage in our civic opportunities, our civic responsibilities, to come together as a city, as individuals, who represent a myriad of organizations and personal opinions. It is our role tonight to listen, to be thoughtful, and to be caring to all those who are here, and to be respectful, and to consider that we are here to do the city's business, and that it is important that we consider all our residents, our friends, and those who visit our community. Let us be thankful that we have this opportunity tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you and bravo. Off the cuff, from someone that loves the city. I love that. Okay, the next order of business is the roll call, please.
Councilmember Musgrove.
Here.
Councilmember Nunez.
President.
Councilmember Walton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. Okay, if the council could join me in front, we have some proclamations and presentations. Donna? If I forget my reading glasses, that's big trouble for me. So the first one is, we have DUI recognitions. The San Marcos City Council does hereby present Deputy Juan Rodriguez Soto with an honorable certificate of recognition for conducting thirty DUI arrests in two thousand twenty-one. We invite all citizens to join us in commending the deputies for their proactive policing and leadership. Deputy Juan Rodriguez Soto. Thank you so much. Wait, wait, no, you can't go away. You have to wait up here. Um, I'm, I have a few more, and then you have to take a picture with us. I'm sorry that you get to do all that, but we appreciate you and we want to make sure we recognize you and memorialize the evening. Okay, next is Deputy Joshua Valdez with an honorable certificate of recognition for conducting forty-nine DUI arrests in two thousand twenty-one. We invite all citizens to join us in commending him. Okay, he's not here because he's probably out looking for people that are. Oh, he broke his leg? Making a DUI arrest?
No.
Oh. All right, then we have Deputy Furman Gonzalez with an honorable certificate of recognition for being recognized by the San Diego Police Officers Association as the two thousand twenty-two Sheriff's Peace Officer of the Year. We invite all citizens to join us in commending him on his proactive policing, leadership, and training new deputies, and identifying a vehicle used in a Vista homicide case. Thank you. Okay, then we have Brian Bentley. Is he here this? Oh, I didn't see him. There he is. With an honorable certificate of recognition for conducting forty-one DUI arrests in two thousand twenty-one. Good job. Good to see you. All right, did, did any of you want to say anything? Oh, they're gonna leave it up to you, Brian. The last guy.
Well, we, we do appreciate the opportunity to serve the community. We, we're very happy to work here. The city's always been very great to us. It's a, it's a wonderful place to work. We enjoy the opportunity to try and keep, keep you guys as safe as possible, and your guys' support is always encouraging and very helpful. And we just look forward to continue to serve this community, and we're excited to see where things go from here.
All right, thank you. Right. I don't know if you're all aware, but we are the second safest city with the second lowest crime rate in the entire county of San Diego. So it's quite a great service that our deputies provide us. Okay, so National Preparedness Month. Okay, this is gonna take a bit because it is too font. Thank you, staff, for that. Just kidding. The San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes National Preparedness Month. Whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, has designated September as National Preparedness Month. And whereas California residents commonly experience the effects of disaster, various disasters, ranging from severe winter storms to major earthquakes and devastating wildland fires, resulting in damages costing hundreds of millions of dollars. And whereas, in the state of California, two million five hundred sixty-eight, nine hundred forty-eight acres burned in two thousand twenty-one, which emphasizes the loss of life and property damage can be greatly reduced if appropriate agency preparedness measures are taken before, during, and after a major emergency. And whereas, San Marcos Fire Department deployed several personnel to twenty-three incidents in two thousand twenty-one, highlighting the improved, the importance of disaster preparedness among individuals and institutional levels. Whereas, since the aftermath of the two thousand fourteen and two thousand seventeen fires in San Marcos, our city's population has grown by ten point five percent, which also demonstrates the necessity for careful and thorough emergency planning and preparedness among individuals, communities, and agencies locally. And whereas, the residents of San Marcos are encouraged to download the SD Emergency App in order to receive San Diego County specific emergency notifications or emergency information related to evacuations and local disasters, and be aware that after an emergency, you may need to survive on your own for several days. Being prepared means having your own food, water, and other supplies to last for at least seventy-two hours. Residents are encouraged to visit readysandiego.org online to access a list of supplies for building your own emergency kit, as well as a principal disaster plan guide free of charge. Therefore, the San Marcos City Council does hereby proclaim the month of September, two thousand twenty-two, as National Preparedness Month. And one thing I would like to add is that you need to make sure all of your family members know what your plan is. It's really important that all of them know, especially when you have young ones, what they need to do in an emergency. And if you didn't see it on your way in, our, our fire department has our new brush engine outside, which will help us in our wildland fires, and also when we have to send our equipment elsewhere within the, within the state of California. So anyway, I'm not sure if anyone's going to be accepting this, but I don't think so. Actually, I think we should have Chief Barron. Is he here?
Uh, yeah, the chief had another issue pop up, so.
Oh, well, we need him out working, so that's okay. Anyway, thank you very much. And the next order of business is going to be Councilmember Nunez with her Smile Award. Councilmember Nunez.
Good evening. Buenas tardes. Welcome, everybody. Bienvenidos a todos. I'm gonna ask our honorees to come up with me. So, Mr. and Mrs. Contreras, please join me up here.
Thank you for coming up.
This is very special to me, and it's very personal. Right, I feel like this is really full circle for me personally, for my family, and for so many of the residents of our beloved city. I'm gonna share my personal story with me, so you can see how personal and important this is for me. So, my family and I arrived in the city of San Marcos in nineteen eighty-one, and I was eight years old. We arrived, I arrived undocumented. I didn't speak a word of English. And we made San Marcos our home. And one of the reasons we were here is because our mom wanted, of course, a better life for me and my sisters, and she wanted us to receive an education. And fortunately, we ended up in the city of San Marcos. So at eight years old, I was supposed to be starting third grade. And I was held back because I didn't speak or write English. I did a year, an entire year of third grade, actually, second grade, because I, I wasn't allowed to enroll in third grade. I was able to finish that first year, but I wasn't able to learn because I was at Alvin Dunn Elementary, where really there were no bilingual teachers there. And the students that were there really were not encouraged to speak Spanish, so I didn't learn that first year. And I was told later on, I, I found out, my mom was told that I was held back in second grade another year because I didn't speak English. And I was told because I didn't speak English, I, I was special education, I didn't have the ability to learn, which of course was untrue. And so I was enrolled for another year of second grade. So luckily, what happened, we ended up moving from that part of the city to San Marcos Boulevard next to San Marcos Elementary. And that, of course, changed my life. And that's how I got to meet these two individuals that are here today. And somehow, these two individuals found out that I was enrolled now at San Marcos Elementary. And I was assigned to Mr. Contreras's third grade class because he was a bilingual teacher. So this man, this teacher, literally took me under his wing. And this is how I began to learn English. This is how I began, really, my education here in the United States in San Marcos. And of course, the following year, I had Mrs. Contreras, where I was able to finish my elementary school at San Marcos Elementary. And I share this personal story with you, not because I'm special, not because I'm extraordinary. The extraordinary part is that there are hundreds and thousands of families that have been making this journey that I described, right, coming to our city, coming to our county, looking for a better life, looking for opportunities. And it's these two individuals here in our city and in our district that welcomed us, welcomed us, and literally were willing to put themselves sometimes in positions where it was probably contrary to their own personal well-being. But they did this, and they did it for me, and they've done it for hundreds, probably thousands of students over the years. And this is why, for me, it's so important to recognize the sacrifice, the service, that these two individuals. And I can guarantee you that we're still seeing the ripple effects of the work that you've done over the last forty, fifty years. And I know that because we see it all around us, right? We see it in the leadership. We see it in the individuals that are in the classrooms now, that are counselors, that are electeds, that are serving in the military, that are athletes, award-winning athletes. And so we continue to see this. So for me, this is really a great opportunity to recognize and shed light on the work that you've done and the service that you've provided to our city and to our residents. So I want to share a little bit about what they've done. And this is just a portion of what they have offered to our city and to our residents. And once again, this is so common with our families, right, that you have lived these long lives here, and you have planted these seeds. So Mrs. Contreras, Cristina Contreras, was born in Mexico, in Aguascalientes. And she arrived here in our city in nineteen sixty-six at the age of ten. And her and her family settled here, of course, in our city of San Marcos. And she says that not a surprise, her parents wanted a better education for her and for her siblings. And they would not otherwise have had this opportunity. And so, of course, she attended San Marcos Elementary, and she attended San Marcos Junior High, and she attended San Marcos High School. And in fact, in her junior, in her junior year, as a senior, she participated in the cadet teaching program geared for high school students considering a career in education. Once again, not a surprise. She went to Palomar College for two years, where she met her husband, Mr. Contreras. And then went on to San Diego State to get her teaching credential. Of course, I think if we would have had Cal State University at San Marcos, I bet you probably would have gone to San Marcos. And she taught in our San Marcos Unified School District for twenty-nine years. And one of the important pieces, of course, other than the academics, is that Mrs. Contreras was specifically involved in the creation of a folklorico dance program at San Marcos Elementary. And for us, those of us that have been here in our city, I can't imagine the opportunities that that opened up for so many of our young students, right, that had the creativity, that had the talent, and otherwise would have not had that opportunity to flourish. And what I find also fascinating is that it was under your leadership. It was under, and of course, with the collaboration of the parents, that you were able to run this program, which is not a surprise, right, considering how generous our community is. And I have here that with the help of Mr. Contreras and several mothers, the students perform every year at various schools and places in the community. And that all the performing wardrobe was designed and constructed with the help of many talented mothers and members of the community. And so that is definitely to be celebrated. Now, with Mr. Contreras, he, of course, also has a long history here in our city. And I have the Mr. Contreras, Tony Contreras, as we all know him, was born also in Mexico. He lived in Tecate, Baja California. And then his father brought him to the United States. And he arrived in Vista at the age of five. And then eventually, they settled in Escandido, and he lived in Escandido until his father passed away in nineteen seventy-nine. And then he met Mrs. Contreras, Cristina, at a Mecha dance at Palomar College. And then they were married, and they decided to move to San Marcos. And they've been living here in San Marcos ever since. So a long history. So he started teaching in the eighties. I encountered Mr. Contreras, it would have been nineteen eighty-two. So you have a sense of the long history. And what I want to share is that all of this, as I think about this history for the two of you, that is the history that I have had in the city. That is a lot of our history. I went to San Marcos Elementary. I went to San Marcos High School. I went to Palomar College. I was part of Mecha, right? I went on to Cal State San Marcos. I was part of Mecha, right? So we share this, this united history. And so it is an absolute honor for me to be here and to present this recognition. I am going to take the time to, to share what your certificate that you're receiving today that's recognizing at least some of the work that you've done and the service that you've performed to our city. And so what we are presenting today is our Smile Award that stands for San Marcos Inspiration, Leadership, and Excellence Award for Service to the Community. And it goes on to say, with an innate gift to love, inspire, and nurture, Cristina and Antonio, Tony Contreras exemplify service to the community. Their extraordinary dedication in and out of the classroom molded generations of students, teaching them to be courageous, compassionate, authentic, healthy, and resilient. Mr. and Mrs. Contreras understood the challenges and opportunities students confronted and created culturally and linguistically responsive learning environments for all students to grow and thrive. Their classrooms provided safe and welcoming spaces for critical reflection, artistic expression, ethnic cultural diversity, athleticism, and civic leadership to flourish. They inspired students to conquer their fears and taught students the tools they needed to overcome the inequality and institutional racism students often encountered in their classrooms and communities. Their pedagogy transformed the lives of countless students of color, in particular Mexican and Chicano students, and their families, who embraced their cultural identity and influenced individual and community enrichment and empowerment.
I was not told that I had to talk, but I will. On behalf of my wife and myself, I would like to thank all of you. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Maria Nunez, whom we've known since she was tiny, tiny, tiny. That little quiet girl that didn't say a word in my class until. tiny, that little quiet girl that didn't say a word in my class until I spoke Spanish to her, and her eyes just kind of lit up, and they've been that way ever since. Now she's a councilwoman. I'd like to thank everyone in the City Council for, for this acknowledgement. Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank especially my boxing family that came to, to be here with us, my family, my granddaughters Paloma and Gracia, and my daughter Lidia. So I thank you very much on behalf of both my wife and I.
I just want to say thank you. He's not the only one that can speak.[644.01][644.01](Laughter) Thank you, you're beautiful, thank you.
Yeah, not to touch you, don't get too much. We also have one public speaker on this item, and that is Arcela Nunez. So I'm going to put this over here for you.
The Smile Award is such a great way to start Mes de la Herencia Chicana, Latina, Mexicana. We are celebrating Latina and Latino leaders who have made extraordinary contributions to our community. So thankful to have the opportunity to express and to share mi agradecimiento. Mr. and Mrs. Contreras, you saved the lives of so many students. Muchas gracias. There were many times when children like myself, those of us who were immigrants, came here, and it was teachers like you who took the time to see us. You provided the space that we needed to learn. You have made it possible for thousands of students and their families to come out of the shadows. I'm a direct beneficiary. Mr. Contreras was my teacher as well. And it was your kindness and generosity that influenced my personal and my professional career. You introduced me to Chicanismo, to the importance of learning and appreciating our heritage and our culture, and it is because of you that I went on to get a PhD in history. So muchas gracias.
Definitely, the best part of our job is recognizing amazing people within our community. We really appreciate all that you've done for our community. Okay, our next order of business is Sandy Curl from the County Water Authority. San Diego Water Authority, sorry. We'll just give the audience just a couple of minutes to... I'm sure they, they would think that everything that you have to say about water is important, however...
It was the best part of your meeting.
It was.
You had a tough act to follow, Sandy.
Yes.
Sorry, sorry about that, Sandy. But we do want to hear about water, because it is an important thing, of course. Anyway, thank you for all you do.
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm Sandy Curl, the General Manager of San Diego County Water Authority, and I'm honored that you've allocated some time to hear this presentation tonight. As many of you know, I'm a former city manager, and I know all of the issues and challenges that you have, so again, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. So I'm going to give a little bit of background on the Water Authority very briefly, and then talk about our journey to managing our supply in the region and being water resilient. So just as quick background, for those of you who don't know, the Water Authority is a wholesale water provider in San Diego County, and we were created in 1944 by an act of the state legislature. Our board consists of thirty-six board members, I have twenty-four member agencies, and every your agency being Valacitos Water District and Vista Irrigation District. We include cities, special districts, Camp Pendleton, and we serve 3.3 million people in the region and support the $240 billion regional economy. Water is delivered by our member agencies through an extensive set of pipelines. Our agencies are highlighted on this map up on the screen. We play a role in helping to deliver that water through 310 miles of large diameter pipe, which you can drive a truck through, so very big pipe to move the water. We also play a critical role in terms of long-term water supply planning and preparation for the region, a role that we are the sole agency that does that for San Diego County. So here's a breakdown of how we use water in San Diego County by sector. You can see that by far residential use in San Diego County is the largest, then followed by commercial, industrial, and institutional use. So reducing our dependence on imported water from outside San Diego County region has been one of the primary goals for the Water Authority since the early nineties, and building a diversified water supply has been critical to build a reliable drought-resilient water supply. And we successfully diversified the sources of our water supply through strategic investments our residents, businesses, and member agencies have made in innovation and infrastructure projects that I'll talk a little bit more about as we go. The majority of our region's water supply, about sixty-nine percent, travels about three hundred miles from the Colorado River to reach the Water Authority's aqueduct system. And thirty-one percent of our supply is local, including water from the seawater desalination plant in Carlsbad, water purification projects, pure water and advanced water purification, surface water or stormwater runoff, which is very minimal. We get about nine inches of rain on an average year. Groundwater, not that much in San Diego. We're not like LA or Orange County that has big groundwater basins, and then recycled water or the purple pipe. And our supply diversification over the last three decades has, we've barely used a water portfolio approach to managing our drinking water supply, and it ensures that even during tough times, when some sources are less than readily available, others are available to provide service. And our water is here when we need it, but it wasn't always that way. And I know many of you have been in the county a very long time. In the early nineties, late eighties, we had severe drought. We had essentially one source of water. We were cut back thirty-one percent for thirteen months. It had a huge impact on the economy and the quality of life here in the region. And it really affected everything from North Kenny Farms to the young biotech industry, and really, local leaders said, "We're not going to be in this situation again." So thankfully, running out of water is not one of the problems that we have in San Diego County today, and though other parts of the state are really in dire situation, we are in a very good position. So what we learned is that no single-source strategy would work to ensure supply reliability. Our portfolio approach has focused on diversifying our water supply, improving our infrastructure through investment, increasing local supplies, and reducing the need for imported water. And this is what our water bills are paying for here in San Diego County, is having that reliability and making sure that we have sufficient water for our entire region. So let's take a closer look at a few of our investments that has helped us be resilient. One of our most important investments, and sometimes overlooked, is our conserved water supplies from Imperial County. We did a deal almost twenty years ago now, in October of 2003, where we inked a deal with five agencies, primarily the Imperial Irrigation District, to line two earthen canals, the All-American and the Cotella Canal. Through that lining, the water that was conserved was transferred under long-term agreements to San Diego County. In addition, we funded on-farm conservation practices, and the water that was conserved through those conservation measures were transferred to San Diego County again, under long-term agreements. This supply represents 280,000 acre feet of water annually. We have very high priority rights to those water, and it's one of our lowest-cost source of supply for the region. Next, one of our very significant infrastructure upgrades was to raise San Vicente Dam. We raised that dam to ensure that we had in-region storage in the event of emergency, a pipeline breaks, the hydrology, that we conserve the region for a period of six months at seventy-five percent capacity. So we had that stored in San Diego County. We increased the height of the dam by a hundred and seventeen feet, so it was the tallest dam raise in the world at the time. It got completed in June of 2014, and that additional height added a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand acre feet of water in the region. And if you're wondering, just in your visual person, one acre foot of water is about the size of a football field, one foot deep. So for us visual learners, I find that helpful. And this was one of the components of our emergency and carryover storage projects in the county to ensure we had wet water here in San Diego. And then, as many of you are familiar, the Water Authority put together a landmark deal for the Claude Bud Lewis Desalination Plant. It was a public-private partnership, which now serves about ten percent of the region's supply. We put this project together with Poseidon. Along with it, we built a ten-mile conveyance pipeline to deliver desalinated water to the Water Authority's aqueduct system, and the plant delivers about 54 million gallons of fresh water a day. And then the next increment of water that's coming into San Diego County is through potable reuse projects. That collectively, the region over the next fifteen years will add 100,000 acre feet of potable reuse. The Water Authority is looking to support the regional, the state framework to allow those projects to move forward and also to make them more expeditiously go forward for direct potable reuse to reduce the cost to taxpayers by millions. And the Pure Water Oceanside Project started operation in April of 2022. City of San Diego's Pure Water Project first phase is under construction. They anticipate delivering water in 2025, and the East County Purification Project has also begun, begun construction, and we'll see its water provided sometime between '25 and '26. So if we look at where we are today in terms of our diversification, we're in a much different situation than we were in 1991. And the good news is that these investments that I've outlined mean that we have supplies for today and many years ahead, even with dry hydrology. So the question that I get most often is, are we drought-prepared in San Diego? Because you're hearing a lot about what's happening across California as well as the Southwest. And yes, we are in the most severe drought in 1,200 years, but is the, the question is, is our reliability paying off here in San Diego County? And yes, it is, and we have adequate supplies to serve the region again now and in the future. As I mentioned, we're not experiencing shortages, but if you, as you can see from some of these headlines, there are severe shortages in California, including in the Metropolitan Service area, where they only receive state water project water. That allocation this year is at five percent. And so six million of the nineteen million people that Metropolitan serve have had to go to health and human safety water only, which means that they can water outside one day a week, and it may be going to zero days. Very dire situation. And in fact, one of those agencies in the state water project-only areas asked for additional flow for wildfire risk, and they were denied by the state, which really points to the seriousness of the situation. So I would be remiss if I didn't mention that a very important reason why San Diego is well-prepared for the dry years is that our residents have really taken on conservation as an ethic. We just completed our last survey that we do every two years, and the region is fully committed to conservation, and folks even said that with what they've done, they could do more. The picture up here really shows how to embrace water conservation. It's really a beautiful example of our Watersmart landscaping programs that we put together and teach people how to do these types of landscaping, and this practice is really catching on and has made a huge difference. And to show to that point, our water savings continue during the drought. San Diego's demands have decreased per capita per day by forty-three percent since 1990. That is one of the best conservation rates in the state of California. San Diego has the lowest per capita use of water a day in Southern California. And again, water residents are really using water wisely and making sure that they're conserving. At the Water Authority, we've been responding to the governor's call for conservation by conducting outreach to ensure that our region is doing our part and continuing water efficiency. We're partnering with MWD and Department of Water Resource, Water Resources at the state, local agencies, and business associations to promote water-saving actions and opportunities. And as you can see on the screen, some examples of our call to action. Our outreach efforts really focused on two things that I think will be of interest to you, and that is providing water-saving resources and rebates and partnerships that increase our impacts. Among the resources that we're promoting, Watersmart checkups for homes and businesses and rebates for replacing turf grass and low-water landscape. Watersmart.org has information for both commercial and residential properties on how to save while, money while saving more water. We offer, again, many rebates and resources and encourage you to look at that and advertise it to your community as well, to make sure folks have an opportunity to participate. Our diversified water supply has been acknowledged by a number of folks, including Yale Environmental 360, which is an online magazine for Yale School of the Environment, offering opinions, analysis, and reporting on debate on global environmental issues. And the article notes that San Diego provides perhaps the best example of what cities are doing to make themselves drought-proof, to continue business as usual in the face of deep water uncertainty. And I'll just highlight two others. Last October, the New York Times outlined our region's decades of planning and investment and said, "Try everything approach to getting water has emerged as a model for cities." And the Wall Street Journal also reported on our preparedness for our water supply and securing the region for now and in the future. So as I come to concluding, this was a cartoon that was done by Steve Breen in the UT in April of '21, and it's really quite an honor to have this. It really, while the West is experiencing this mega drought, San Diego has been... It really, while the West is experiencing this mega drought, San Diego has been called a poster child for readiness, and today, the San Diego region is a leader in strategic planning for water conservation and supply reliability. And as I conclude, I want to thank you for your time today. Please stay in touch and follow what's happening. We have a number of ways to do that through our Water News Network and social media. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Sandy. That was a really great presentation. I did have one question, and that is, if I'm reading this right, we actually have, we're using less water than we were in 1991, is that correct?
1990, yes.
Wow, that, that's, that's great. I mean, I, I have actually fake grass in my backyard. It's not as pretty, but you know what? I mean, it's, it's just that it's hot, but I mean, it is pretty, actually. It's just that it gets very hot. But I, I sure, I sure like to have these different options and opportunities. You know, we do live in a, it, no one wants to say it, but we really do live in a desert. I mean, it pretty much is. It's a desert. But the, you know, again, back to the pictures that you had with the beautiful landscaping, the succulents, and most water districts, including ours in Vallesitos here in San Marcos, have master, I think they're called master gardeners that can help you, to tell you things that can grow here and all of that. So it's a very great thing. I think you guys have that too, right?
Yeah, and we do support the programs of our member agencies as well with grant funding.
Great. Okay. Any questions of Sandy? Yes, councilmember.
Thank you, Sandy, for that. That was excellent. I read an editorial in the last year or two, and it was in the LA Times, and I see there's a difference between LA and San Diego, but it said that we have to stop calling it a drought because this is the new normal.
Yes.
And do you, do you agree with that?
I completely agree with it. Actually, I've been saying it for quite a while, that it is not a drought or an episodic event. It's really our hydrology going forward. And the governor came out in August with a revised water portfolio and finally acknowledged that it, we can't do this through conservation alone. There has to be investments in supply reliability, like we did here in San Diego County. There is, based on the hydrology, there's never going to be enough water to keep the economy of California and the quality of life going unless some investments are made. And that's really what, what we learned 20 years ago.
Okay. And my, my second question is what I hear from constituents, and I never really know how to answer the question because I don't know enough about water. But they're constantly told to conserve, right? And it sounds like we're doing a great job. But when there is a new project that is going to be built, whether it's commercial or residential, those, usually the opponents, of course, of the project, will say, "We're told we got to conserve water, and now we're building more condos, apartments, houses that are going to consume this water. How, where's the water going to come from?" Things, things like that. What is, what would your answer be to them?
I've had that question a lot, and there's a couple pieces to that. Number one, the Water Authority plans for the population growth as established through all of the region's agencies' general plans through Sand Egg. And so our planning has taken into account the growth that is anticipated to happen in San Diego County. The growth that is happening is not from people moving in here, but the growth within county. And so it's really about sustaining this region in housing, right? The Water Authority does not get into and is not a land-use agency, but we ensure that there's sufficient supply for the region. I would also say that the new housing that's coming online is so much more efficient than existing housing stock that it's really, it's, it's not an equivalent comparison. I know for people, it's something that really sticks to them because, again, they're being asked to conserve. But the new housing that's coming in because of building codes, plumbing codes, is highly efficient as compared to existing.
Great. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember, did you, did you have something?
I, thank you, Sandy. I had the great benefit of hearing probably a little bit more in-depth presentation at the League of California Cities a couple of months ago, and it's just fantastic. The diversity is terrific. It works. I know with MWD, the great reliance on Owens Valley water coming down, and when that dries up or siphoned off through other jurisdictions. And when we look at Marin, where they have always enjoyed multiple sources of water, and the weather up there has shifted, now they're scrambling. And I think the, the planning that went into, the folks that came before us, realizing that the pain from the early 90s was not something we want to go through again, and that diversification, and you can see the really magnificent job that was done transporting that water from Imperial to San Diego County. As, if you're driving and you're looking around, you can see some of the, the really incredible work that was done. So thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes. Randy asked my builder question, so thank you. That, that was good to know, that you do take all of that information, and we have plenty of water for what we need to do. Two questions. It says 69% comes from the Colorado River. What happens as that starts to dissipate?
Excellent question. So a couple of things. The water that we have from the Colorado River, we created, it's conserved water. If but for our investments, that water wouldn't be available. So, and it's also because it's based on IID's priority rights in the Colorado River system, it's very high priority rights. So with the challenges on the Colorado River, and we're engaged in those conversations and helping with solutions, the priority rights system, we're in very good stead. But having said that, if it gets to a level where cuts need to come even to the high-priority rights holders, we're 6.5% of IID's allocation of Colorado River water. So to the degree they get cut, we got cut proportionally. So we have some, it would be a nominal amount out of the 280,000 acre-feet of water that we receive. So there's balance there. But what is being talked about now is this ag-to-urban transfer that was done is really where new water's going to come from, other than investing in projects such as desal or potable reuse. It's going to the farming communities, helping them use the water more efficiently and purchasing that water they don't use and bringing that to the urban areas that need it. And like I said, our deal is 20 years old, and there hasn't been another one done, but now it's starting to be talked about as really something that needs to happen because ultimately there is no free water left, and folks are going to have to pay for that. And I think it's taken getting to this point to really fully appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. And then I have one more question. You mentioned about the rebates for commercial and residential. I think a lot of times residents don't read the information that comes and maybe don't realize that that's available to them. What about rebates for public agencies? Because, well, you know, if you think about, one of your largest water users would be the school district, the colleges, the city. Wouldn't it be advisable to try to structure a program where they could get some rebates and reduce some of the water usage?
Well, when you think about it, the rebates are coming from the ratepayers paying the water bill, and obviously, government agencies pay those bills as well. The focus has been on the, the external users, if you will, as opposed to the government agencies, but I certainly understand your point.
Seems like, you know, we should get a fair share too.
That would be the legislature, probably, that needs to make some changes with that.
Just saying.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Did you have something, councilmember? Yes?
I have a twofold question. So what, can you, can you expand a little bit more on what does the education look, look like in general for our residents, right? I think water is one of their big expenses, right, that we all have to tackle, the fluctuations, and obviously, the, the, the needs and even the fluctuating needs. So I'm wondering, so what does that really, education look like? How does that happen? How do our residents get, right, all of this information, all the changes? And then the other part of my question is, how does it happen in Spanish? We have a significant number of residents in the city and in the county that are monolingual speakers. So what does that look like then for our residents?
Yeah, great question. So it's twofold. One is, the Water Authority has created outreach and education materials as an umbrella to share with the member agencies to put out to their end-users. We've just launched a huge campaign that is multilingual and going into different venues than we have used in the past, based on information from people in the community, giving feedback of where that would be most helpful. And that's an area, in the past, the county Water Authority hasn't really been focused on it, but I believe it's a huge need, as you say. We also want to make sure there's equity of accessibility to those rebates, and so getting it out in multilingual, primarily Spanish, is critical so that people are aware that those things are available. And through your water agency, they're putting out information to all of your residents and businesses. Some are using the materials we have created, others have created their own. And so really, your agency at Vallesitos, you could answer more specifically, but we've created umbrella tools, toolkits for the water agencies to use to get that information out.
Thank you for that. Do we know, do you know, or do we know if Vallesitos is putting out this information to all our residents, at least in Spanish, or?
I can't speak to Vallesitos, I'm not actually a customer, but we can check and make sure, and we, and we do work with them from a communications perspective, so we can also get the word out when they send information out as well.
Can we also find out, since there's a number of residents that are part of the Vista Irrigation District, that's okay. Thank you for that, and thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sandy. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to our consent calendar. Are there any items that any councilmembers wish to pull?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to oral communications. Do, oh, got some speaker slips. Okay, first we have Carol Gendel, followed by Tanis Brown, and then it will be Jennifer Ho after that. Welcome, Carol.
Hi there. Let's see if I have the right piece of paper here before I get up. Good evening, all. It's good to see you all. Mayor Jones and councilors, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak today. I come before you with a request that might seem to be, might not seem to be as crucial as some others, but is easier to resolve and within your power to do so. I am requesting you cease the practice of starting city council meetings with an invocation led by a religious leader. Deputy Mayor Jenkins kindly replied to my initial email regarding this subject over the summer and mentioned a Supreme Court 2014 case that the city attorney researched that permits such invocations due to their historic nature. However, Greece versus Holloway did little to protect the rights of attendees who are not Christian. For example, there was no requirement that prayers be non-sectarian, and in fact, Justice Kennedy denied the need for such safeguards that would force the legislatures that sponsor prayers and the courts that are asked to decide these cases to act as supervisors and censors of religious speech. As we have seen in this very chamber in the not-too-distant past, how ineffective such guide rails are with a speaker who chose to ignore them. Would the community be so sanguine if, for example, our Muslim brothers, brethren invoked their prayer in the name of Allah? What is the difference? And I have, I have sincere concerns that the Supreme Court's recent rulings have consistently moved further in favor of removing the clear constitutional wall separating church and state. When I was in school decades ago, it was common to begin the school day with a Bible reading. Eventually, the practice was banned in schools because students were captive audience who did not have the power to object to participating in this ritual. Jews, Hindus, Buddhists, Jainists, Native spirits, Wiccans, and atheists, our country has people of many faiths and no faith. Thus, I believe the time has come to cease this custom because it is time to acknowledge that our city is far more diverse than when it began. It is time to open wide the door to all and create our own new history and customs. In place of the current religious invocation, rather, take that brief time to acknowledge the land we occupy as the unceded lands of our many native tribes. Such a statement could easily include the recognition of the important work we gather to do on behalf of our community, and a request for all who are assembled to honor the spirit of the original peoples and work together in harmony with each other. Such a statement would be inclusive of all residents of San Marcos, and I'm submitting for you, and I've given each of you a copy, for your consideration, a short example that could be used that is currently being incorporated by many organizations in our community. The example that I give to you is, we acknowledge that we live on these traditional and unceded lands and that we are guests on the homelands of Luiseno, Payacumuitim people. We further acknowledge that this land also remains a shared space among the La Jolla, Palma, Pauma, Pachanga, Rincon, Suboba, Cupangatuitim, Cupenyo, Kumia, and Ipe peoples. We honor our native neighbors and their traditions and culture, and let our work this evening be in service of our native neighbors and all who abide in this community. I thank you for your, for your consideration. Does anyone have any questions? No?
Well, it's a, it's a, I don't know, does anyone have any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, our next speaker is Tanis Brown, followed by Jennifer Ho, and then it will be Theodore Kabinas after that.
I indulge your, your honoring both Jen and I to come up and speak at the same time, and we'll still stick to five minutes.
Oh, okay. No problem.
We're here to share with you an exciting project that the San Marcos Historical Society and the Special Collections at Cal State San Marcos are embarking on. And we are doing the North County Oral History Initiative, which will be starting this month, and it is a training sessions followed by interviewing interesting people about their San Marcos stories or North County stories. So we're here to share with you, and in hopes that maybe one of you or each of you would participate. And I'm going to turn it over to Jen, who is really the mastermind behind this project, and to tell you a little bit more about it. So Jen Ho, thank you.
Thanks, Tanis. Hi, everyone. I'm Jennifer Ho, archivist for Special Collections at Cal State San Marcos. In case you don't know, an archivist is a librarian who works in the archives. And the university is looking to bring prominence to our region's history, and we're working on a renovation in the library that would do just that. It would include a gallery and meeting space for collaborations in the community, and we'll bring that vision to you, to the council, at a later date. But we're here because of the North County Oral History Initiative. Tanis and I are working on this together, and it's, the objective is to document the narratives of people in the North County community. We're looking to create a historical record that reflects everyday people, including people of color, immigrants, the poor, and working class. We'll be doing this via one-on-one oral history interviews, which will be preserved in perpetuity at Cal State San Marcos and the San Marcos Historical Society for the purpose of research, scholarship, and most importantly, in my opinion, tangible record of people who are often overlooked and forgotten. As Tanis mentioned, this, the people that we, will be doing the interviewing will be trained in a two-day workshop, starting a week from Thursday. And so our ask of you is if you would like to be interviewed, then to please let us know, or if you or any- Or if you or anyone here knows of anybody that would be a good candidate for an interview, then to let us know as well. The folks that are being trained in the workshop have the freedom to interview whoever they'd like, as long as the people are based in North County. But some folks, even though they're interested in interviewing, don't have anyone in mind that they'd like to interview. So we would just like to collect some names of folks that might be good candidates. We've left some literature at the front as well for anybody to take, and I'll leave my business card as well up there, too.
Well, I think this is great. And so are you going to be doing it via video, telephone, in person? How is that going to work?
Sure, are you, do you, are you, excuse me, are you referring to the oral history interviews?
Yes, yes.
So ideally, oral history interviews are done face-to-face, in person.
Perfect, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, but you know, sometimes folks can only be accommodated via Zoom. We're still in the COVID era, and then some folks can only be interviewed from a distance if they're too far from each other or don't have transportation, so that's also an option.
But you could still record the Zooms, I think. And there's just something that's missing in the translation when it's, when it's verbal and you don't actually see expressions. So I've actually.
Videotaped.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
The, the interviews will be videotaped.
Yes, that's what, yeah, that's what I was hoping, that it would be videotaped and that it would also include Zoom, because there definitely are some people, like, I think, you know, the, the Eubanks family, I'm not sure that they're here locally any longer. Restaurant wrote that, some of our history. So some, some of the different things, you know, the, with San Marcos specifically, the Pearl Hoff Chicken Ranch. I know some of those family members actually live here locally, so we could double and get that. Halandia Dairy, I mean, some of the things that, you know, San Marcos specific would be, I think, excellent. Do you have, like, a, are you doing any social media of how people would reach you? Or anything like that? Or would we just look at the information that you gave us? I think it's, I think you put a phone number on here. Will you just share that?
Yeah, just contact us via that info. There's no social media push at this time. It is still in a pilot phase, but hopefully in the future.
Baby steps.
Yes, no, I, I think it's fabulous.
We're just starting, we're, we are, and again, this was a grant project, so we were kind of limited. We'll have 10 people doing interviews, and the result of that is, hopefully, that two or three, each person who is trained to be interviewed, who will be an interviewer, will then go out and train or interview two or three other people. So by the end of our grant project, we hope to have 30 interviews that will be available to the community. And our goal is to see this project grow after this, so.
Okay, all right, well, I have several people that I'd like to volunteer. Off the top of my head that I can think of, so I definitely will be, I'll definitely reach out to you. Do any council members have any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you so much, really appreciate.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mayor, I have a quick question. How many stories are you looking to secure?
As many as possible. We have about 10 people that we're going to be training in oral history methodology, and those folks have all agreed to record two to three oral history interviews. So we'll have 20 to 30 interviews by the end of this project. But as Tanis mentioned, we want to keep this going into the future.
And part of our responsibility at the Historical Society is that we hope to have a showcase next spring to invite you to come and see these completed oral interviews and maybe meet some of the people who have been interviewed in the project, so.
Great.
Anyway, you'll hear from us again.
Wonderful, thank you so much for the update, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Theodore Cabanis, followed by Marlene Walder.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Theodore Cabanis. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm grateful to be here, I'm grateful to be a member, a San Diego County resident. And Councilmember Maria Nunez, that was a great story, and appreciated it. And congratulations to the sheriffs that are keeping the streets safe. I want to talk about two issues today. I want to talk about my frustration with the housing prices, and I want to talk about my son getting injured from the Pfizer vaccine. First, the housing prices. I want to vent my level of frustration because I feel like I'm doing everything right as a San Diego County resident to provide for my family and do everything possible to make as much money as I can to survive, to live here. And everything I do is not enough. I volunteer in my church. I'm an active member of the Community Resource Center, helping prevent homelessness in our county. I work 60 hours a week, six days a week. I often skip lunches and breaks. And I made $80,000 last year, and it's not enough to afford rent. And it's frustrating. And I moved here, I married a woman after college from San Diego County who was born and raised here, and I promised to move her here and raise our son here. And I have an obligation to do that for four more years until he's 18. Hopefully, he goes in the military after that, and I can move away if the, if the prices don't change. But when we moved here in 2013, the housing, the rent for a two-bedroom, two-bath that we lived in in San Marcos was $14.95, and I could afford that. And I've been living with five people for three and a half years to make ends meet. And I've been trying to get a place for my family to live. And the place that I used to live in nine years ago is currently $3,500 a month. That's a 427% rental increase in nine years. What hasn't gone up 427% in nine years is my income. In fact, I've taken two paid decreases in the last 10 years. And I've not only taken paid decreases, but I've been forced to work more hours and spend less time with my family. And I've had to switch careers to try and make more money, and, and it just hasn't worked. And I know that there's an abundance of jobs, but there's, there's a very, there's a big lack of careers. And to live here, you have to make $120,000 a year. And I ask all of my friends, and I have a lot of friends in high places, are there six-figure jobs that I can work for? And they all say no. And that's what it takes. And when I asked the rental property, who can afford $3,500 a month if I make $80,000 and I can't afford it? And they said, you have to have roommates. And as a single 44-year-old father, if I work 60 hours a week, I think I should be able to come home to my family and not a bunch of raving lunatic roommates, what I've been doing for the last three and a half years. The vaccine, my son on June 7th of 2021 received the Pfizer COVID vaccine, and four days later, his body broke out in something called petechiae, which is where all the blood vessels pop in the body. He was rushed to the emergency room, they thought he had leukemia. Turned out to be something called immunothrombopenia, which is ITP. This battle's been going on for a year. He's been in and out of the hospital. He suffers from fatigue, depression. He gets hematomas, he has memory loss. He's a shell of his former self. He was a black belt in Taekwondo and had a 4.0. He falls asleep in class now, he currently has a 2.5, and he's had to give up all physical activities, including football. And it's been extremely frustrating. The government issued the vaccine people sovereign immunity, so you can't sue them. And so nine lawyers turned me down to sue the big vaccine companies. And I took it upon myself to file a suit. The lawsuit has gone to the federal courts, and there's a hearing on October 6th. So please keep in your, keep us in your prayers. I have written letters to the editor of the San Diego Tribune about this. I've been ignored. I've reached out to every congressman and senator and political figure you can imagine to try and get my son's voice heard, and I've been ignored. It's frustrating. And that's all I have. Thank you for letting me speak. God bless. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just, I'm really sorry for all the hard things you're going through right now.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Marlene Walder.
Okay, thank you, council members. I'm here to speak in front of you again. Maria, the Smile Award was beautifully done, but that story should be in the archive. That's really a nice story.
Thank you, Marty.
As for the water district, I happen to be in Rincon Water District. I'm in Vallesitos Sewer District. So I, you know, you talk about San Marcos, and not everyone is in the same water district. But today, instead of my park alone, I'm here to talk about traffic and the traffic now that school has opened up again. Barham is like a parking lot. Now, coming over here, I was able to get onto the freeway very easy, not the freeway, the road. But going from Oceanside towards Escondido, the freeway was in gridlock almost. They were moving, but probably about 15 miles an hour. And then it bogs down again by Nordal. But mine is going early in the morning. I have a doctor's appointment, a standing one at 8:10. And it used to be, I could leave at five minutes to the hour and be on time. Now, if I'm not out of my house by 20 minutes to eight, I can't get there because the traffic is backed up from the college but at Woodland Parkway, past our mobile home park. And so I go the long way and go down Lamore to get to Woodland Parkway. I can turn right, but if I was going straight ahead, you can't do that. And I can't turn left out of the park on some mornings to do that because 20 minutes or 25 minutes or maybe 30 minutes to get to the college, they have to, you know, pass that point of Woodland Parkway. And what's happening is Woodland Parkway's backed up, the street where Rancheros is, all four directions. Everyone has to go through the yellow light. Nobody wants to stop at the red light. And they're turning left onto Rancheros to get to the freeway from Mission and turning left. And they block the intersection a little, so those of us trying to turn onto Rancheros can't go until the light turns almost yellow sometimes because the other people just keep turning. And so the traffic since school opened is horrendous. And we're going to have the apartments on Meyer Street opening up, coming out onto Barham. And we're going to have, if it passes, the property on Barham where the church is. And you say they're not going to turn left, well, good luck to you. And it was only going to be in the evening that you were going to put a no-left-turn sign up. And it's not going to happen. They're not going to be able to get out. And as someone who's on the traffic commission said to me, they're going to be going through our mobile home park to get to Lamore from Barham through the park, out Lamore to come out on the signal, which is a smart move, in my opinion, but we don't like it, we don't want it. But if they can only turn right, they have no other choice. So that's it.
Okay, thank you, Marlene. Okay, next order of business are reports, Sann deck. Seems like, well, we had, we were dark in August. Most of what we've been talking about recently, we did give the outside independent auditor a raise, but that was at the last meeting. But most of what we've been talking about is the road user charge, which is part of the regional plan, and a lot of discussion about that. That is predicted to be coming back at the next board meeting, which is two weeks from Friday, which I think is the 23rd. That will be coming back for more discussion to actually remove that from the plan. So we'll see what happens moving forward. And then also, there are some discussions about the actual plan because there is currently no funding for it as far as the tax measure that was supposed to start bringing in revenue next year after this, after it failed to get on the ballot for this November, on November 8th. So that's not going to happen, so there's going to be some more discussion about that. So, and then also, how the free transit for everyone will be paid for. And then also, a reminder, you, you might bring this up too, but I'm going to bring it up, that transit is free for everyone under 18 still. So if you have, know anyone that needs to get to school or jobs or whatever, they all have free transit for everyone, and they can get that on MTS and then also NCTD. Other than that, not too much more going on in Sann deck. There are some audits that are going to be coming up in the next month or so, contracts. And I think, I think that's it, that's coming forward immediately, anyway. And that's all I have for today. League of California Cities, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a division meeting this month. The next meeting will be next month, in October. We did have the annual conference. So Jack and I, we were in Long Beach last week, Wednesday to Friday. So really, a highlight that I want to bring to the council's attention, we did have a resolution that was brought before the conference, really last minute, but it did get sufficient votes in order to proceed to, to be brought to the conference for the voting delegates to decide. And I bring it up because I believe that this is something that this, the League of Cities will be following, and there was a similar item that the council here voted on. So I'm sure we'll see this again. So the resolution that was presented to the league was a resolution for the league to support a ballot measure to strengthen local planning authority. And specifically, it was requested of the league for the league to partner with the Brenda Mendoza Sandell Tripartisanshipally Land Use Initiative to restore local land use, planning and zoning authority to local governments throughout California. And the resolution also requested that the league allocate sufficient resources to help advance and qualify the Brand Mendoza Sandell Initiative for the California general election in November 2024. What came before the, the conference voting body was to be able to proceed to discuss this resolution. The body as a whole voted not to proceed with the discussion. So what was recommended and what was decided that this request, this resolution, would go back to committees. And so as I understood, it's going to be vetted by the housing and the environmental committees. So I'm sure we will be, we will be hearing on that, and we will see more of this. But I did want to alert the, the council that this was something that, that came before the, the voting body.
Yes, it's what the city actually, that the council supported by vote for, for, to bring local planning back to municipalities.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that's one of.
Yeah, and it's, and it's also, they have a website. I think it's Our Neighborhood Voices, and it has all of the information on there, too. But it is the Brand Mendoza, but I guess there's a new name, someone signed on to that. But it is Tripartisan Initiative.
Okay, so I believe it will be something that the league, I think, will be bringing to our attention. So we'll keep an eye on that.
Perfect, all right, thanks. Any other discussion? Okay, North County Transit District, Deputy Mayor.
We meet on Thursday.
Thursday, okay. North County Dispatch, North Com.
Thank you. We met on August 24th. It was a pretty quick meeting. The bulk of it was dedicated to the evaluation of the administrator. And Chris Heron, and he continues to get glowing reviews. And every time we. And he continues to get glowing reviews. And every time we evaluate him, stories are told about how that organization has been transformed by his leadership. So it's always well at NorthCom. And we opened the meeting with, again, and those of you who have served, we recognize dispatchers who've, who've, who've acted heroically in incredible circumstances. And, and there was an amazing one of a, of a woman calling nine-one-one because her child has stopped breathing in the backseat of the car. And the dispatcher just so calmly gets her to pull over, take the child out, do the CPR. And, and so I asked her, because oftentimes you don't get to know the outcome of these stories, you know. We went into closed session, so I got a chance to talk to her. And I said, do you know the outcome of that story? I think it was a two-year-old. She said, yes, baby's fine, but baby had gotten into mom's heroin and ingested it, right? I mean, these incredible stories, these people, these people hear every day. It's, it's pretty incredible. So we talked about doing a presentation here, just to, just to come say hello, remind the public what they do. Maybe hear a call or two, so we can, we can, you can hear firsthand what these dispatchers do every single day of the week. But that's all.
All right, thank you.
I have a question. We used to do dispatcher appreciation week, probably before COVID. I'm just wondering if they might do that again. I think we would go down and, and different cities that participate would maybe be responsible for food or whatever. That might have changed. But do, are they considering doing that again? Because it's, it's great to go down there and be able to thank them. And then also, you know, they'll let you put the headset on and, and listen.
You know, it has not come up. It hasn't come up. And I wonder if it's the new leadership and then COVID so quickly after. But I'll ask next time. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. And I'll take some credit for, Chris, I was on the committee that.
Oh, really, really?
That, that suggested.
He's excellent.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
Yep.
I just want to know when they're going to get their new building.
Yeah.
Only because we were talking about that when I was on there, which was back in, I think I got, I think I joined the board in two thousand seven.
Yeah.
So.
I think it's, who knows when, but it'll be someday.
Yeah, I think I got off in two thousand twelve when you got on.
Yes.
Right? Yeah. Wow. Okay. Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Musgrove.
Thank you, Mayor. A very brief meeting on August twenty-ninth, probably the most significant, was through some recent rulings up in Sacramento that requires that the major service providers for us, sending gas and electric, they have to offer up their clean energy credits that had already under contract, that they no longer need to the supporting agencies. So Clean Energy Alliance and then the agency in San Diego. So we ratified the option to take some of those contracts that were already in place with those credits that come with it to continue to save our ratepayers money on their electric bills. And we had, I think we talked about this last time, or maybe Councilmember Walton addressed it, that the cities of Oceanside and Vista respectively joined the Clean Energy Alliance. So at the last board meeting, we swore in Joe Green, Councilmember from Vista, and alternate board member Katie Melendez as the representatives from Vista. And then Deputy Mayor Ryan Kime from the city of Oceanside as their representative. And our next meeting is a week from this Thursday.
Okay. City Council Business Visit. Did anyone go on a business visit?
Yeah, Maria and I did. Maria, you want to, you want to take the lead? Go ahead.
Cactus. Thank you. So we were at Cactus corrugated containers. And I think we all share the fact that the name threw us off, right? We were expecting to see plants. But instead, they produce packaging containers. And it was also, it was surprising to me to hear that they focus on the small businesses, the up and coming. And they focus on, they said, the more challenging, the better it is for them. And they welcome it. And so they've been here since nineteen ninety-seven in our city. So a long time. They have a long history here. They've raised families here. They, we met with Doug, who I believe he said that he took the business over from his, from his dad.
Right.
And so they've been here a long time. And he specifically, they chose San Marcos because it's strategically located geographically between San Diego and Los Angeles. And initially, when they were, when they were delivering, manufacturing, it really geographically situated their needs. And I'm so impressed that as their business has grown and adapted to the technology and internet, they've remained here. And it sounds like they, they plan to continue here. But maybe you can share about what it is that they do.
Doug has found a niche. He was very nice. He's Canadian, so you would expect him to be very nice. And they've downsized over the years. They used to manufacture boxes here in San Marcos, but they don't do that anymore. And their, their clientele really is this kind of the small-time entrepreneur who needs something special for their product. And if you can see the, you can see, it's hard to see here, but there's breweries, you know, six-pack boxes and little bottles and candles. And up in the upper right there is an actual wood box that, that, this is kind of a neat project. They, they produced the, sort of the storage for an Avet Brothers, if you know their music, an Avet Brothers Special Edition album, right? So it's more of a limited batch type thing that they do, using all kinds of materials. And, and he said he's as busy as he's ever been.
I think the other surprising part is, right, considering it seems like the volume that they do that. They have five employees. That's how lean they are. And they, of course, do business all over the, all over the United States, all over the world. So another long-time business that we have here in our city.
Excellent. Okay, San Marcos Creek Project. Our city manager, it's really changed over there.
Been a busy summer. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. So a couple of items of note. We don't have a detour through, a detour through Discovery Hills anymore, which is, makes the folks in Discovery Hills happy. We're working on the south side of Discovery Street, which is a challenge. But I think we've got that pretty dialed in after a couple of issues there early on. But that work will go on for a couple of months. And so that temporary connection for the folks who, who front on Discovery is still going to be something they're going to be dealing with for a while. The trail along the levee has been installed. There's all sorts of stuff going on with the bridge of Via Veracruz. Foundation works have been completed on the, and the columns, on the abutments. You'll see this, the shoring for the superstructure going up soon. So that's going pretty quickly. We're installing some of the park structures in Paseo del Orija Park. So the whole piece of that's coming together. The Box Colored on Pacific is mostly done. So some of that impact of traffic in that area, San Marcos Boulevard, becoming to a close. One of the important things is the water line replacement going up via Veracruz will be occurring over the next month or so. And that will have a traffic impact where the tie-in at San Marcos Boulevard is. So we'll give everybody plenty of notice there and try to minimize that. But, and then the formwork for the bridge superstructure, you'll start to see that wood part of the bridge start to go up, the false work, pretty soon. So it's going quickly and I hope, I don't want to say this, but weather permitting, we don't get too many delays through the winter and we're on line for our spring opening of Via Veracruz.
You know, I, I was looking through, I was looking, trying to locate a picture the other day and I saw one of the flooding that used to happen there at Bend. And I went, gosh, it's so great to never, we'll never see that again. We need to make sure we have those pictures up so people understand how bad it was. Because it will be one of those things where they go, oh, you know, that's not, that didn't really happen. It sure did. I mean, people got stuck there all the time. I actually have a picture of a car that was stuck in there. So glad those days are over. Okay, any other council commentary?
I have a question.
Yes.
For Jack. Is there a estimated ETA on when Discovery will open at Twin Oaks and go over to behind the Kaiser to Bend? It looks like it's getting close.
It's, it's getting close, but we're making, we've kind of made a decision that we would prefer to not create this through-traffic movement right at sort of this critical piece of Via Veracruz and Discovery. So the project through Discovery will probably look mostly done, but not open. I think we want to, we want to get that, if it had happened maybe a year before and that through-traffic could have been used to, but to introduce a bunch of new through-traffic right into like the, the peak of our Via Veracruz, San Marcos, or Discovery Street work, doesn't really make a lot of sense. So we'll probably just hold back on opening Discovery all the way through, probably to closer to when we're done with the creek. It was always our goal to try and time them up. But yeah, so it's going to look mostly finished, but not open for a while.
And then one more question. Where Craven comes down and meets Discovery, is there going to be a light there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And those two signals, the one at Bent and the one at Craven will work in tandem.
Correct. Okay. Thanks. Okay. All right. Yes, council member.
Two things. One, I can already read the Facebook comments when the road is, looks finished but isn't open.
Probably why they haven't done that one last little piece that's right there at Twin Oaks.
No, I just wanted to take a sec to acknowledge Councilmember Nunez on her, on her smile presentation. It was, as others have commented, it really was nearly perfect. Those are the kinds of people I think we want to, we want to bring out and shine a light on. But, but I want to say thank you for your, sharing your personal story. I had no idea. And I think it's, I think it needs to be acknowledged out loud that, that little third grader who got held back, who couldn't speak English, went on to pass the California bar exam, which is one of the hardest bar exams in the nation. So thanks for that.
Thank you, council member.
Okay. All right. With that, this meeting is adjourned.